This meeting of African-American scholars began with a tearful rendition of the Black National Anthem. It took place one day after a school shooting in South Florida that killed 17 people.
Maybe it's just me, but I'm noticing that majority of your mass murders are people, you know, lighter than myself. And the media want to always depict these people as troubled. But when it comes to African-Americans, they are violent.
The panelists say the news media is often shallow in its portrayal of black suspects. It's part of the conversation during African-American Heritage Month and a forum called African-Americans in Times of War moderated by ABC 7 news anchor Mark Brown. Another topic: gun control.
The reason why they want to allow some people to have guns, they don't really mean for us to have the guns. If they did, they wouldn't have been so bad at the Black Panthers. So if we put it in context, I think there are times that there are larger issues.
The book Negro Phobia and Reasonable Racism is authored by USC Law Professor Dr. Jody Armour. Armour points to the unjust mass incarcerations of black men and says there needs to be more focus on solving socioeconomic factors behind black crime, which mostly takes place in underserved areas.
The black crime rate for middle-class blacks and the crime rate for middle-class whites is roughly the same. Statistically, no different. So most of the gun violence is coming from truly disadvantaged blacks, right? Who are in grinding poverty, crumbling schools.
Problems that should be addressed more in the news. In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The forum was hosted by the mayor's office and the Our Authors Study Club. As we celebrate Black History Month, we're shining the spotlight on a South LA clinic for the people. The Central Neighborhood Health Foundation provides critical medical care in some of LA's poorest neighborhoods. Anna Marcos takes us there.
The Lopez kids are paying a visit to the doctor. And an eye exam and physical are just part of the routine for staying healthy. Doctors at the Central Neighborhood Health Foundation in South LA will take everyone, regardless of their ability to pay.
Our goal is just to give the healthiest kids for the society. Doesn't matter if they are poor, if they are rich.
So we wanted to know, how healthy are these kids?
What do you eat?
Um, salad.
Salad.
What else?
The sister isn't buying this so-called health kick, though.
She eats candy. She eats shit.
She eats bad stuff, too.
Okay, so the health habits need some improvement. Dr. Basset Brown, the doctor running the clinic, has made it the clinic's mission to not only treat symptoms, but to teach patients healthier lifestyles.
The real plague today is not acute infectious diseases, but chronic debilitating diseases like diabetes, hypertension.
The clinic has been here since 1929, but after the Watts riots, many of the health centers in this part of town closed down, except for this one. After the doctor here died, Dr. Brown took over and brought it back to life.
This Central Avenue used to be called Charcoal Alley at the time because this was sort of a burnt-out area after the Watts riots. A lot of the businesses had fled and the doctors had fled. I just finished my training as working in an emergency room in South LA. And at midnight, I got a call saying they needed a doctor up here.
Now, more than 50 years later, the clinic provides comprehensive health care with four clinics in LA and six in San Bernardino County. This is the flagship clinic, and the need here is great.
We'd come here at 6 o'clock in the morning, and we're here till 9 o'clock at night.
For the community over here, there are not a whole lot of opportunities. So we are blessed to have this community over here.
And there's more in store for the clinic's future.
One of the things we're working on is expanding this facility and actually building housing. Councilmember Price has promised that the city will participate because that'll be part of the collaboration to make it happen.
A medical center where things like housing, health, and what food you eat are part of the treatment. And it's all given with lots of TLC. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The clinic also provides classes and workshops on different health topics. A new stadium means new jobs for Angelenos. Hundreds of folks came out to apply for current openings at the Los Angeles Football Club Stadium. Rasha Goel was at the job fair where some applicants scored big.
I'm overwhelmed with gratitude. That's how I'm feeling. I'm very excited because now I can just broaden my perspective with this and further my career and just take it home with my family, share it with them.
Ariana Chanel applied for a position in guest relations, and little did she know she'd be going home with the job in hand. She was among the hundreds of LA residents who attended a job fair hosted by Councilman Kern Price at the Bank of California Stadium, which is gearing up to host its first Major League Soccer game in April.
We're excited about this investment, the $350 million investment the LA Football Club is making in this new stadium. And we want to make sure that our residents are able to take advantage of the employment opportunities that exist. They're committed to hiring locally, and we want to make sure that our residents show up for hundreds of full-time and part-time jobs in a variety of areas.
We are hiring for all of our frontline positions: security, guest services, food services, hospitality positions, as well as operations. So those are all the folks that will help us on game day and event day, execute all of our events.
Interviews and drug testing were also done on the spot. And for those without experience, no problem. Job training will be provided.
It was fast, easy, and chill.
This is really nice, and this is a nice turnout. So many people are down here interested in working for the neighborhood, and that's good.
The stadium is a state-of-the-art soccer stadium seating 22,000 and is part of the revitalization in Expo Park.
We're excited about not only the soccer field, but the restaurants, the shops, the stores are going to be a part of this complex, and the opportunity to hire locally so that local folks are getting these jobs.
I'm going to root for my team, my city, and I'm going to do the best that I can to make people welcome here.
Again, there are approximately 1,200 positions that need to be filled. Now, if you were unable to make the three-day career fair, well, you can log onto lafc.com/careers to find out more information and to apply. In South Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Again, that website to search for job openings is lafc.com. Well, back at City Hall, Lunar New Year celebrations got underway with plenty of music, dance, and tradition. This year was dedicated to man's best friend. Gil Reyes reports on how city leaders are using the occasion to promote pet adoptions.
Festive lion dancers prowl the aisles of Los Angeles City Hall to launch Lunar New Year 2018. And hot diggity, it also happens to be the Year of the Dog.
The Lunar New Year is celebrated by many Asian cultures in China, Korea, Vietnam, Thailand, Indonesia, Malaysia, the Philippines, Taiwan, Singapore, and right here in Los Angeles.
LA's first Korean-American council member, David Rue, mentions the best assets of the astrological canine and supposedly anyone born in the Year of the Dog. Characteristics include loyalty, hard work, and fairness. In LA's Chinatown, doggy images fly on flags. Councilman Gilbert Sadio represents the community. He helped welcome the beautiful Miss LA Chinatown Queen, her lovely court, and some new furry friends.
This is the first time we've ever adopted five dogs in one day. Where are the owners?
And a treat from Council President Herb Wesson and colleagues, during that weekend only, all dog and cat adoptions at city shelters were free. The city's six shelters have recently achieved its "no-kill" goal. That means no healthy shelter animals had to be euthanized last year. Pet adoptions helped. Another reason to celebrate with dogs, cats, and yes, lion dancers, too. Now, if you were born during the years 1946, 1958, 1970, 1982, 1994, and 2006, then you were in fact born in the Year of the Dog. Lucky colors this year: green, red, and purple. Reporting from Chinatown, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Get even luckier by adopting a new friend this year. Dogs, cats, and even rabbits need loving homes. Search for one at laanimalservices.com. A new partnership between the city and Loyola Law School helps get former prisoners back on their feet. Councilmember Mitchell Farrell brings City Hall to his constituents, and a family turns their tragic loss into something positive for their community. All these stories in City Beat. Mayor Eric Garcetti partnered with Loyola Law School to offer free legal services for formerly incarcerated individuals. The new clinic helps clients move on with their lives after incarceration. Garcetti said that people should be met with forgiving hearts, open doors, and real opportunities when trying to rebuild their lives, adding that it's not only the right thing to do, but it's critical to helping keep our communities safe. First launched last year, the clinic is a partnership between the mayor's office of Reentry and Loyola Law School. It's staffed by student advocates who represent clients needing legal assistance in such areas as employment, immigration, child support, and professional licensing. The clinic has already handled more than 220 matters and is supported by the Mayor's Fund for Los Angeles and the California Community Foundation. For more information, visit lls.edu. Councilmember Mitchell Farrell recently held a community walk and neighborhood cleanup in Atwater Village. O'Farrell and his staff went door-to-door to distribute important contact information for free city services. Volunteers from the community and the Los Angeles Conservation Corps were also on hand in a neighborhood beautification project. O'Farrell said the goal is to bring City Hall to the people instead of the people having to come to City Hall.
I'm a big believer in bringing government to someone's doorstep. It's really important, especially in this day and age, when through social media and everything else, we're actually losing connectivity with one another at a very basic human level. And so it's important to me to take that message to everyone's door and to the constituents that I serve.
The Department of Rec and Parks, along with Council President Herb Wesson Jr. and the Los Angeles Parks Foundation, gathered to celebrate Lafayette Park's new playground in honor of Lionel Murray, a two-year-old boy who died last March. In honor of their son, his parents decided to give back to the community by building a playground for kids ages 2 to 5. With the help of friends and other groups, the Murray family was able to raise enough funds to build a playground, which includes an ADA-accessible swing, shade structure, and resilient surfacing. The park is located in the Westlake District of Los Angeles and serves approximately 32,000 residents.
It's amazing that a young kid that lived only 24 months will have an impact on this city and in this area for years to come, as thousands and thousands of 2-, 3-, and 4-year-olds play on a park dedicated for him.
A new walking path across the South Dam of the Silver Lake Reservoir attracted big crowds on opening day. Gil Reyes reports on this change of pace for regulars at the reservoir.
A new walking path opens on the south end of the Silver Lake Reservoir, and for today only, people were allowed to go beyond the fence and get really close to the water. Reservoir regular Ruth Siegel wants that every day.
It's amazing. It's fantastic. I mean, on the outside, you just feel like you're on the outside, and it's just a totally different perspective to be up close to the reservoir.
Today, we're celebrating the opening of the path across the dam. So no longer will people have to go along the bottom of the reservoir and along the narrow streets of the bottom. They can stay around the reservoir perimeter, go across the dams to the beautiful views that have always been locked away inside the gate.
The South Dam pathway is the latest improvement to the lake. It was drained a few years back after the government banned open water sources like reservoirs for drinking water. Residents wanted the HTO back, even if it's just for aesthetics, so it has returned. Crews also added a flowing underground pipeline.
So that even in the drought years, the reservoir will always have water in it.
Silver Lake Councilman Mitch O'Farrell mentions the addition of some 30 new trees. The city is considering even more improvements and wants to know what people want.
Really hoping that the city will one day take down the fence or push it in more so we can get closer to the water.
Or just keep it open.
Or keep it open. That would be fantastic. Yeah, and then make some improvements to the landscape.
Listening carefully to the concerns of folks that are here, we figured out a way to get it done. I think it's a good lesson for politics today, where we see so much division and so much "no." This is a community and a city of yes.
A city of joggers, strollers, and nature lovers. In Silver Lake, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The South Dam pathway is open every day from dawn to dusk. Dogs are allowed on leash, but bikes are prohibited. While go biking in the valley, enjoy free screening of Disney's Coco, and the realities of Cuban life come to life in a revealing exhibit. All this and this week's Things to Do. Enjoy the West Valley on two wheels. Join Councilmember Bob Blumenfield for a 10-mile community bike ride at a family-friendly pace. Riders will be escorted by LAPD officers, and here's your chance to see the valley like you've never seen it before and get some exercise in, too. The ride begins on Saturday, March 3, at Warner Ranch Park, and will highlight the Warner Center and Woodland Hills. For more, visit blumenfield.lacity.org. Bring the whole family for a free screening of Disney's Coco and enjoy a carnival fiesta. Hosted by the LA Red Shield Community Center and Councilmember Gilbert Sadio, there'll be plenty of free food, free carnival games, and free raffles and free toys for children in attendance. It all takes place on Saturday, March 3, at 2:00 p.m. at the LA Red Shield Community Center located at 1532 West 11th Street. Revealing complexities both on and off the island, Cuba Is explores aspects of Cuba not easily accessed by foreigners and sometimes not even by Cubans themselves. Born from indigenous African and European roots, divergent politics, and limitations in communication and commerce, the Cuba scene in this exhibition goes beyond the folklore and offers new insight into its current reality. The exhibit features more than 120 photos featuring subjects ranging from defiant youth to the hard-partying children of the 1%. The exhibit is on display until March 4 at the Annenberg Space for Photography located at 2000 Avenue of the Stars. For more, visit annbergphotospace.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Or pets? Any motion can trigger an alarm. Thousands of police patrol hours are wasted investigating alarm reports that turn out to be false alarms. That's crime fighting time lost. Make sure your alarm is working properly.
Hey buddy, what's shaking?
We're not prepared for an earthquake!
I love the rain!
We're not prepared for a flood!
Sure, in the movies, this is all pretend, but in real life, you gotta be prepared for any type of an emergency. You can't predict, but you can prepare.
Yeah!
How'd you know? The ball called.
Be prepared at L A F P dot org.
Okay, good morning, good morning. Today is Friday, March 2nd. Want to welcome you to City Hall. If everybody would please take a seat. Shhhhh. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Blumenfeld Bonin, Busciano, Sadio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Coretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue Wesson. Ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Rue moves. O'Farrell seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Harris Dawson moves. Weezer seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, there are requests to continue items 1A and 1J to March 9th.
So ordered.
Additionally, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that the following items be received and filed. 1K as the lien was paid in full. 1I as the lien was rescinded. And 1C and 1L as the properties were determined to be owner-occupied, single-family dwellings and exempt from lien procedures.
Okay, so without objection. So ordered. Continue.
Items 1 through 4 are items noted for public hearing.
Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Okay, let's hold those items and move to the next section.
Items 5 through 7 are items for which public hearings have been held. Please note that no action needs to be taken for item 8, as council will consider the matter under item 14 on this special agenda today.
Okay, so let's vote on the available items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, continue.
Items 9 through 12 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Okay, next.
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment.
Okay, I'd like to recognize Ms. Martinez at this time. Ms. Martinez, the floor is yours.
Good morning, members. Our Hope friends have all brought us a gift. You will all be receiving a Lupita doll for your offices, so please enjoy them. They're all very, very unique, and they all come from the state of Jalisco, El Mexico. So enjoy them.
Thank you.
One of the greatest things about Los Angeles is its diversity. And here in City Council, we make sure that we honor the diversity every day. Week to week, we celebrate different cultures and communities. We celebrate holidays and history, and we also celebrate women. Yesterday marked the beginning of Women's History Month, a time for all of us to reflect on the achievements of women throughout history. This past year alone, women across the country set new records, reached new heights, and broke new ground. We marched in record numbers, we ran for office in record numbers, and women set the American record for the most days spent in space. We have a lot to be proud of, and we look forward to continuing to reach bigger and greater goals. As part of Women's History Month, I want also want to acknowledge the many accomplishments of Latinas in Los Angeles. It's why we've chosen to recognize HOPE and their Latina History Day Conference. Through its conference and programs, the Hispanas Organized for Political Equality work to ensure political and economic parity for Latinas throughout, through its leadership, advocacy, and education. For years, for more than two decades, the HOPE Leadership Institute has trained more than 500 professional Latinas, a program which I'm very proud to be a graduate of. 400 high school youth students from HOPE's Youth Leadership Program have also benefited from their training, and more than 100 college students through the HOPE College Leadership Program, which HOPE launched last year, have also participated. The goal is to engage Latinas in all phases of their lives, and to encourage them to take an active role in advocating for their communities. To help women find their voices and empower them to lead. It is a strong goal that I support every day. Next week, HOPE will be bringing together nearly 1,000 women for its 27th Annual Latina History Day Conference. This year, the theme is Leading with Values and Purpose. I can think of nothing more appropriate. Like for so many women in public service, I also strive to lead with value and purpose every day. I often say that women legislate differently than men do, in the issues that we take on and the words that we use to describe and advance our work. I've often made clear my own mission to empower women, girls, in our city. HOPE understands and promotes it, so women have something different to bring to the table every time they come together, and it's important to value that and respect that work every day. In closing, I would like to also ask you that when you look back on the period of Women's History Month, that I want you to look back and think about the different advances that women have done throughout the city, but particularly in your districts. I am confident that HOPE will stand as an example for, as an organization that empowered and engaged women of all ages and from their different economic backgrounds, to be the voice of their community. On behalf of the City of Los Angeles, I want us to congratulate HOPE for its service for women of this great city that we call our home, and I want to recognize the two-chair women that are chairing this year's conference. Amy Viscara, who's the Vice President and District Manager of Wells Fargo, and Helen Torres, who is the Executive Director of HOPE, to say a few words. Can we please welcome them?
Good morning, everyone, and thank you so much for the warm welcome. My name is Amy Viscara, and I'm a District Manager for Wells Fargo, and I oversee 11 community banking branches through Los Angeles. I'm a Latina leader in my community. I'm very proud to be here today. I have the great honor of serving as a co-conference chair for the 27th Annual History Latina Conference to celebrate the contributions Latinas have made to Los Angeles, California, and the nation. Wells Fargo has been a longtime supporter of HOPE because of HOPE's outstanding work promoting Latina leadership, advocacy, and education to benefit all communities. A special thank you to Councilwoman Nuri Martinez for continuing to support HOPE and for being a mentor to so many Latinas. As part of Women's History Month, the Latina History Proclamation memorizes the importance of Latina role's play in America's society. On this day, we celebrate contemporary Latinas who are building the foundation for our future generations. This marks the 10th anniversary of our future Latina history makers, which honors young Latinas for being positive role models and creating change in their communities. Latina History Day Conference will be held Friday, March 9th. This year keynote speakers include Dr. Betty Uribe, entrepreneur and author Sonia Mananzo, Maria from Sesame Street, and Ana Ramirez, sketch artist from Pix Animation Studios. We're expecting about 1,000 participants, and we'd like to personally invite all members of council to join us to celebrate the contributions at the Biltmore. Thank you so much for your time, and we appreciate and we hope to see you there.
Thank you.
Just real briefly, I do want to ensure that our other co-chair, Rosell Weezer, as Commissioner, gets her props. She's worked really hard to put this conference together. And if you would notice, on the Lupita dolls that you have in front of you, there's a message about the Hispanic market and its contributions into Los Angeles in particular. This is the largest Hispanic market in the U.S., so as Latinas lead the economic well-being, we hope that you take note of that. And if you would do one last favor, acknowledge a Latina leader from your district on Latina History Day. There's a hashtag that you can do that, so that we can ensure that everyone knows the various contributions that Latinas are making in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you.
So on behalf of the City of Los Angeles and all the women that make up our great city, we want to thank HOPE for continuing to be a beacon of hope, but also encourage and empower Latinas across our city. So congratulations to you on another successful Latina History Day.
Okay, Sergeant, if you can clear, I'm gonna do a public comment real quick. Mr. Herman, if you come forward. Items 2, 3, 4, 9, 10, 11, 12, and general public comment. Please stay on the subject. No, you signed up for the numbers. If you're off, I'll let you know that you're not on topic, so go ahead.
Now that I have your attention regarding liens, will Nuri Martinez, on her lien, be forgiving? What the hell are you talking about, Herman? I'm talking about 17 slash 0160.
Okay, that item's been continued, Mr. Herman, so go to another item.
God, yeah, all right, well, let's go to Boyle Heights. $4,000 lien off of East Caddo Street in CD14.
Mr. Herman, you don't have a card in on number 1.
I signed up on liens, mister.
I gave you, Mr. Herman, I gave you the numbers. 2, 3, 4, 9, 10, 11, 12, and general public comment. You have to stay on those numbers.
Joe Busciano, who's not here, dealing with vacate or vacation, where he seems to be after taking developer money, McFarlane Avenue between D Street for Dick Joe Busciano Street and E for Elegant Street for me, pointing out that this asshole politician took money from a developer. And then I go back of his lengthy booklet, dealing with items such as this one. "O'Farrell, Relative Authorizing Project to Restore Host Special Reception." Well, why do you have to host a special reception at City Hall? Why can't he host it at his house and save the public from discrimination because I can't attend? And then under rent escrow, wah-wah-wah-wah-wah, no deal. And then my other items, because this is just too much. Here we go again. CD14, Plan Land Use Management, a committee report. Well, wasn't Jose Weezer a part of that committee in San Pedro, whose name came up for corruption, to resolve a grant to appeal filed by Pedro?
Mr. President, that's item 8, for which we're satisfied.
Okay, Mr. Herman, let's give Mr. Herman his general public comment. Just give him his one minute.
So just the other day, I was up at the Transportation Committee, and the TWN began to get upset. The TWN demanded I be quiet, simply because I called the niggers that get on the train like myself and have to commute. I'm a commuting nigger. I slave over that train to get here to work. Every time you see me, I'm working here at City Hall, by the goddamn racist Bonin and his drug habits, threatening, screaming, yelling at me.
Don't bang on the desk, Mr. Herman.
Well, I'm showing you, I'm amplifying what he did.
No, you're not gonna bang on the desk.
And then he has the nerve to say that I shouldn't use the N-word. 42 USC, 1983, city attorney, fuck you! And fuck this city for homelessness. Put $1 point billion to get me out of City Hall, motherfucker!
Thank you, your time has expired. Okay, if I could get Mr. Previn. Okay, Mr. Previn. Items 1, 2, 3, 4, 10, 11, and 12, and general public comment.
Okay, thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from CD2, and I live in Studio City. We have a measure of civic pride is in order today, sir, because CD2 has levied the largest lien on its residents today. Mr. Krikorian, Anna, thank you. This is amazing, because we are not frequently in that group, and here we are. Kudos to CD12, who has a $4,000 lien. And a special recognition to Nuri Martinez, who with two liens near $3,500, has exceeded $7,500 against her constituents in Van Nuys. And credit to you, sir, for trying to get this whole section pushed out of a public meeting, which is going to be challenged, obviously, to committee, where evidently Mr. Krikorian's gonna review, budget and finance, these liens up there, and thereby clogging up issues about the budget and other important contractual things that Blumenfeld and I are trying to shake some common sense into. So we would appreciate you going in an opposite direction on that. For the vacations of properties, I wanted people to know that what happens here is that the city gives a little piece to a developer who pays a very small fee, and then they assume the tax burden and therefore can do something nice. Sometimes that's in the public's interest, and sometimes it's not. And item number 12, sir, is Project Restore, and this hallowed hall is so beautiful, and it's been restored lovingly, and AECOM, A-E-C-O-M, are going to provide some top-line guidance, and certainly Coretts and Ebenezen are titillated by that, because these are the real powerbrokers who are not only building the Bonins Airport and the jail for the county. I mean, this is the big league. So to have a nice little fundraiser up on the city, and they, Project Restore will cover it, sir, so there's no concern about that. And by the way, a little acknowledgement for Mr. O'Farrell, who is also getting rid of the acknowledgements for Walk of Fame stuff in these meetings. Enough is enough. He does not want RuPaul to get the same kind of...
And that item is not on the agenda, sir.
No, no, that is on the agenda, sir.
Get back on...
Item 11, sir. How is RuPaul getting on the Walk of Fame, not on the agenda? We'll challenge that later. It is, and so is, I believe, the Star War, not to be confused with Yoda, the little one, who is resembling some of the supervisors, but I'm talking about Mark Hamill, who is Luke, if I'm not mistaken. So once again, thank you for the George Lucas giveaway, which is going to be much more appreciated when Mr. Lucas agrees to provide free admission to Angelinos and everybody, because it's that kind of a thing. When you get a sheath for all of your life's work, you make it available to the people of Los Angeles. You don't charge them $20 at the door, and Mr. Wesson and his wife, who was on that exposition boulevard oversight group, will make sure of that. We certainly hope, sir, and I know that you are the kind of man who can bring that initiative forward. Would you discuss that with the Lucas group to make it clear that yes to all the bending over backwards the mayor did, and yes to the great project, but admission is free?
Let's give him his one minute for general public comment.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'll try to make it, whoop, you wanna, there you go. I want to make it brief, but I wanted to thank Krikorian for walking out during yesterday's MTA meeting when I addressed the mayor and Mark Ridley Thomas directly about the preferential parking district, number 276, which is facing, you know, we're basically facing a long Ventura Boulevard and a little area nearby. Suddenly, about 1,000 spaces are going to be taken off of the usage for public and privatized for individuals who have signed. Now, the big problem is that half the people, most of the people, don't even know about it. It's only those who are going to benefit who get the notice. That's why I've asked Irene Ibronesian, who's the budget man over in Krikorian's office, to help us get some money to alert the people, so that they can be properly noticed and fairly noticed. And I will say that there is legal precedent for this. Arlington County Board versus Richards makes it okay to do this, but there are conditions, and there are things you have to do, Fable. So we're gonna review that, because many of those things were not done, and the information that was circulated was inaccurate.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Madam Clerk, let's now vote on items 2 through 4. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Now let's vote on items 9 through 12. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Ms. Rodriguez, for our next presentation. And Mr. Galp, oh, there he is.
Hey, morning. How are you? Good mor- Good morning, colleagues. Mr. President, today we are celebrating Open Data Day in the City of Los Angeles, as we highlight the importance of civic innovation, open data research, and technology. I'm proud to be joined today with Controller Ron Galperin, as well as our partners in the county and the Southern California Association of Governments. Open Data Day is an annual international event that takes place, we'll be commemorating this tomorrow, March 3rd. Communities around the world, including public servants, web developers, and individuals, come together at events to promote and share open data. Open data is critical to transparency and accountability, and I know that's something that this council works very hard, and I know the leadership of this city is very committed to an open and transparent and accountable city government. While I served on the Board of Public Works, you know, I started the overhaul of some of our technology systems that helped to create a more competitive bidding process and assure that we could have small and minority businesses effectively compete for city contracts through the overhaul of the Los Angeles Business Assistance Virtual Network to make it more accessible. As Chair of the City's Information Technology and General Services Committee, I'm committed to helping to fulfill and uphold a data-driven environment where we can increase access to city services, fix decades-old broken systems, and empower our communities to engage with local government. And I'm, again, proud this morning to be joined, also, I neglected to mention, to be joined by our General Manager of our Information Technology Department Agency, Ted Ross. But at this time, I'd like to introduce our City Controller, Ron Galperin.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Mr. Council President. Good morning to Councilmember Rodriguez. Thank you so much for all of your great leadership. And to so many of the other council members. Councilmember Blumenfeld, who also has helped so much in all of this, as well as Ted Ross from ITA, who has been just an amazing partner. I'm thrilled to be with you here today to celebrate open data and innovation, and literally the data revolution that we have managed to pull off in the city of LA. Let me give you a couple of numbers from 2017. Number of 31- Number of 311 calls received: 1,020,020, to be exact. Business tax renewals: 280,000. Building permits: 165,000. EMS incidents: 382,000. Traffic citations: 219,000. The number of art class enrollments through the Department of Cultural Affairs: 182,000. And homebound meals served through the Department of Aging, which made a big difference in the lives of our seniors each and every single day: 725,079 such meals, just in 2017. My office gathers these and hundreds of other stats and data points, and they're all available online on the Controller's office and updated regularly. And actually, every day in our office is Open Data Day, because we not just love it, but we know how important it is to the vitality of this city, as we seek to measure how it is that we're doing. I deeply believe in the ability of data and technology to improve transparency, accountability, and efficiency, and I've seen it work, and it makes a great difference also in helping government make much more data-driven decisions. Each year, Open Data Day has become even more important. There are now 332 Open Data Day events around the world, and that is from zero, which existed just a couple of years ago. And here in the city of L.A., anybody with a computer, or with a cellphone, or with any kind of other device can access all sorts of information about how our city is doing. Everything from our progress in repairing and striping of streets, how much we're spending on homelessness, where you're most likely to get a parking ticket and perhaps might not want to park, how many soccer balls we bought, who we bought them from, what we paid for them, and much more. In January, Bloomberg Cities rated L.A. as the only city in the country to receive gold status for its work in being a data-driven city. It's a huge achievement that so many people can be proud of, and also, the mayor has been very much a part of making this happen, along with so many other people in the city. Now, I'm also really proud of Data and Donuts. First of all, I hope you'll find your day sweetened with some donuts that have been provided to you, as well as with a Data and Donuts t-shirt. I'm really proud that our office, the Controller's office, hosted the first Data and Donuts. As a matter of fact, we bought the first donuts of Data and Donuts, but not with city money, I might add. Today, it is a joint collaborative between the city, the county, local civic technology community, SCAG, so many others. And because of the work of all the people who are right here behind me, we have been able to really transform how it is that data is used in the city, in the county, and be an example to the rest of the nation. So thank you so much for all of your support here in the council. Thank you so much again, Councilmember Monica Rodriguez, for all of your work, and have a happy Open Data Day.
Thank you. I'm proud to... I'm really proud of the work that we are engaged in with our city partners, like Controller Galperin, to promote transparency and accountability every single day through innovation and open data research. And on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, we have some certificates here.
Ms. Rodriguez, we have a member on the queue. Mr. Blumenfield?
Great. Thank you. I just wanted to commend you for bringing this forward, wish you all a happy Open Data Day. I think Stevie Wonder is working on the new song for Open Data Day. But, you know, when we started this thing five years ago, there was a lot of resistance and concerns. And I remember we had these big meetings with all the GMs, talking about, hey, we're going to put ourselves out there, warts and all, but in the end, it's going to make us a better city, and we've been moving in that direction, especially, Ron, with your leadership. You have been just a champion of this, and Ted as well, moving forward, and now Monica chairing the committee. You guys are an amazing team. And I always like, I think about, one of my favorite quotes from Justice Brandeis was, "Sunshine is said to be the best disinfectant." And that's what, you know, open data really is about. It's about cleaning up our city for transparency, accountability, and then ultimately to make us a better, more efficient city. So I'm just thrilled about it, and commend you all for your great work on this. And thanks for the donut.
Thank you, Councilman. So in my zeal to be as efficient as possible, I neglected to acknowledge a couple of other speakers that we had ready in the queue as part of our presentation this morning, and so at this time, I'd actually like to invite Jesse Conde with Enterprise Systems Support Division for L.A. County to come.
Hi, thank you. My name is Jesse, as Councilmember just mentioned. And on behalf of the Data and Donuts team, I want to thank everybody here, the council, Ron Galperin, the City Controller, for their support, and in special commendation for the Data and Donuts team. For those that may not know, Data and Donuts is a monthly speaker series, where invited guests from the city or from the county of Los Angeles come and present topics on open data initiatives. And our goal is to foster this collaboration among the city, the county, and other government organizations. We deal with similar issues, both the city and the county. We have limited resources, limited funds, limited amount of time, and what better way to solve problems than to collaborate over some data or over some coffee and donuts? So, Councilmember Rodriguez, thank you, and Ron Galperin, also thank you. I'd like to acknowledge also some of our executive management at the county of Los Angeles, and I have with me our Assistant Auditor Controller Karen Loque, that is sitting here. Over to my right. Our auditor controller at the county, John Nammo, the Director of ISD, John Minnick, Dave Westlick, General Manager, also at Internal Services at L.A. County. And last but not least, let me just briefly mention the team members of Data and Donuts that work tirelessly to set this up every month. Ry Berg, Viki Engler, Emily Forscher, Taylor Campbell from the city, Hunter Owens from the city, Juan Lopez, formerly from the city, Nina Kim from the county, John Neal from the county, and myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. I'd also like to ask Ry Baer, Senior Regional Planner for SCAG, for some remarks.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks for having us here today. And SCAG just really wanted to come today and salute the Data and Donuts team, as well as the city of Los Angeles, for making data-driven decision-making both a priority and a reality. So at SCAG, we've recently adopted what we're calling the Future Communities Framework, and this is going to be our attempt to support smart community efforts across Southern California. The Data and Donuts team has been an invaluable resource for us by informing our process along the way and providing guidance and expertise. So at SCAG, we are looking forward to continued collaboration with the team to ensure that data from cities across L.A. County and the region is shareable, open, and impactful for the public good. So thanks to everyone on the team for having us involved.
Thank you so much. So now with that, and again, my compliments, you know, on behalf of my colleague David Rue, who was very excited about Data and Donuts this morning, as he inhaled his donut. You know, this is a... Thank you for this collaboration, and in commemoration of this 2018 International Open Data Day, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, thank you for your work.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Mr. City Attorney, did you have an announcement for us? Well, let's go ahead and wait on that. I'm going to go ahead and take comments for item number one. Gerard Signs, are you here? You signed up for item 1B? Gerard Signs? Anyone here with a card for item 1B? Saying that, I'm going to call the next speaker then. Jacqueline Monterosas? Are you here? Jacqueline Monterosas for item 1M? That person is not here as well? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the remaining balance of item number one. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes. Let's go ahead and open our general public comment cards. Daniel Wright, Stacy DePoo, and Mary Ann Curtis, are you here? Daniel Wright, Stacy DePoo, and Mary Ann Curtis. Okay, come on up. You can stand behind Mr. Wright. Good morning, sir. Go ahead.
Daniel Wright of the Silverstein Law Firm. Councilmembers, I just generally wanted to comment on your ongoing practice, which remains a legal problem, of calling at the same gathering of council members a regular meeting and a special meeting at the same time and place. Government Code Section 54956, with respect to special meetings, says that when you post and conduct a special meeting, that you are required to conduct, quote, "no other business" at that meeting. It's clear that the legislature's intent is that that refers to the gathering of this legislative body. It was never the intention of the legislature to essentially allow the use of a special meeting agenda with only 24 hours' notice to add additional items to what essentially is what you're treating as a regular meeting. That's why the agenda for your special meeting starts today at 13 and 14.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Thank you very much, Mr. Wright. The next speaker is Mary Ann Curtis. I'm sorry. Stacy DePoo, followed by Mary Ann Curtis, and Robert Manning. Robert, are you here? Go ahead, ma'am. Good morning.
Okay, good morning. I've never done this before. So I'm just here to speak up for the La Rina Plaza project, just as a community member who donates to Chris List and have volunteered for Safe Place for Youth. And obviously, my family does what it can to help with the homeless problem here, and so I think we need more housing, obviously, for them. And I used to live in Seattle, and I also volunteered with the homeless teenagers there, and we had a mixed-use project, where families who had a hard time buying homes would get a cheaper house next to someone that was homeless. It was an all-in-one, all-homeless, because that can obviously be a problem. So I was just going to speak up on behalf of that project and hopefully get that back on the board. Don't know how that works. But I know, I think Wezar was... Had rejected it, and now it's back on the... To vote or something? I don't know. Just wanted to say I'm in support of developing that, so that's it.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Mary Ann Curtis. Let me just call two more speakers before we start. Robert Manning, are you here? Robert Manning? Ariana Alcaraz? Ariana Alcaraz, are you here? Julius? I see you're sitting down. You're next. Go ahead, ma'am. Good morning.
Mary Ann Curtis, I'm representing the Freedom Socialist Party in Los Angeles, and I'm here on two accounts. One is great concern about the ongoing high-end development, boutique hotels, high-end condos, when we know from the L.A. Times series that L.A... Los Angeles homelessness crisis is a national disgrace, and today's article talked about who's taking charge of the homeless crisis. My main question is, when are you going to move on using the city-owned properties that are at your disposal, and that your own controller has said should be used for homelessness housing and shelter? Secondly, the presence of police and just moving people along, the street sweeps have got to stop. This is no help to anyone, and as a member of the public, I really think you've got to do something. We can't just say, see something, say something. I urge you to do something immediately. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Robert Manning, are you here?
Before that, Madam President, I'd like to point out, because like, I don't know if the cameras caught it, Mr. Herman has been jumping up and down, which is very distracting to us, trying to pay attention to the speaker and must be to the audience.
Mr. Herman, this is your final warning. You will be escorted out of the building if you continue to disrupt our meeting. Our next speaker, I called Robert Manning more than three times. He's apparently not in the room. Ariana Alcaraz? Good morning.
Hey, good morning. My name is Ariana. I'm a member of the Los Angeles Community Action Network. I wanted to speak on the item relative to the Homelessness and Poverty Committee, which I know there was already a hearing on, but we wanted to acknowledge that it's great that you are looking at city-owned properties to expand shelters for people in Skid Row. We wanted to submit this inventory of underutilized or empty buildings that we mapped out in Skid Row. There's about 150 spaces that can be used to rehab them. Some of them are completely empty, some of them are somewhat empty, but this is a great start for Councilmember Wezar to use Proposition HHH funds and work with developers to create permanent supportive housing. We acknowledge that temporary solutions are important, and temporary shelters is important, but we really have to address the root cause of the problem, which is the lack of housing and permanent housing. So if I can give this to you, that'd be great.
You have something to share with us? Okay, the sergeant will take it. He'll pass it to the rest of the members. Thank you. Next speaker is Julius. Come on forward. Julius, before you start, I'm going to call three more speakers. Jacqueline Monterosas, are you here? Jacqueline Monterosas, is not in the room. Leah Ree, Memzick, are you here? Go ahead, and then George Abrams. George Abrams? Go ahead, Julius.
My name is President Julius. I'm the true President of America. Nothing more true has ever been said in the history of the world. You know, Hollywood is programming our children to do school shootings. You need to shut down the Oscars. You need to shut down the Weinsteins. Constitutional criminal law requires, anybody here with a law degree, help me bring the Tamarindomics truth to the American people. If you do not do so, you are guilty of treason. Don't cry in the future and say you didn't know, because I'm telling you right now, we have a record of this being kept right now, being made right now. It will be kept. It will be used as evidence against you in a court of law. You need to arrest everybody at CNN for conspiring with ISIS to destroy L.A. with a nuclear terrorist weapon. Your racism will come back to haunt you.
Thank you, Julius. The next speaker is Leah Renee. Leah, I saw you earlier. George Abrams, are you here? You are? Okay. Go ahead, Leah. Good morning.
Hi, my name is Leah Renee Memzick, and I'm a property owner in the city of Los Angeles, Councilman Bonin's District, CD11. And I want to show you something, so you can stop pretending that it doesn't exist. This is a storm drain. Imagine, I can pick it up over my head. You know why? Because it's less than an eighth of an inch wide. This is the storm drain that protects the Pacific Palisades coastal bluff for the entire Santa Monica Mountains, and it goes right through the property in front of my house. I believe you're framing me for something horrific. Bonin, it is time. My name is Leah Renee Memzick. I'm a victim of a criminal enterprise occurring in Los Angeles public offices, along the coast of the city of L.A. in Council District 11, which activities continue to cause me harm, my property harm, and I believe there are other victims as well.
Thank you, Leah. Your time is up, Leah. Thank you, Leah. You need to sit down. Thank you.
Can you hand this out?
Yes. You can just go ahead and give it to the sergeant. Can you guys please help her with that? Don't get hurt, Leah.
Great. Can I take you a piece? Here, I brought you a small piece and all.
Okay, thank you. George Abrams, are you ready to speak? Go ahead, Mr. Abrams. Good morning.
Yeah, every day should be Open Data Day in the city of Los Angeles. Here are some of the things you do wrong. You delay access to files. So if people have administrative hearings, they can't get them in time to rebut anything presented by a developer. They don't allow people to record the public terminal screens in the planning department, even though it's a public access area. They try to deny you the ability to photograph planning records, and they harass and bully and threaten you with arrest if you do so. And the city fights records requests in court cases. And the city fights records requests in court cases again and again and again, despite having lost at the Supreme Court about what records the city is obligated to produce. And so, this is a pattern or practice of fraud on the public, and you need to change the way in which the city gives access to public records.
Thank you very much. That concludes general public comment. Mr. City Attorney, we're going to go ahead and move on to our special meeting.
You didn't call Martin Murphy.
Leah, we're, sir, Leah, these are only, these are the people that I called are the people that had signed up for cards.
I called Mr. Martin Murphy. He came all the way down here to speak.
I don't have a card for, under that name.
Yeah. I thought it was a vote. What the hell?
Can you please talk to the sergeant? There are no more cards for any other speakers. Sir, did you fill out a card?
Yes, I filled out a card.
What is your name, sir? I can't hear you. Can you speak into the mic?
Martin Murphy, I filled out a card, I filled out the form to comment.
Mike Murphy?
Martin.
Martin Murphy. I don't have a card for you. Are you speaking under general public comment?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay, go ahead, but I need you to fill out a card when you're done.
Yes, sir.
You have one minute under general public comment. Your name is Mark?
Martin Murphy.
Martin Murphy. Go ahead, sir. You have handouts as well.
Thank you. Please ask the Department of City Planning and the Department of Building and Safety to comply with the Coastal Act. In my area, in the Bel Air Bay Tract, the sewers and storm drains are leaking, and the city is issuing permits without required coastal permits. And it's very likely they will reactivate the moving landslide and again block Pacific Coast Highway at the Bel Air Bay Tract between Pacific Coast, on Pacific Coast Highway between Sunset and Temescal. The PCH is already partially blocked, and it would be re-blocked by the action of the city. And the city will have liability for not complying with the Coastal Act and excavating on a moving landslide. So, I would ask that the, it's in Mr. Council Bonnens District, I would ask that you ask city planning and building and safety to comply with the Coastal Act. It's not that difficult. It just require excavation and development to comply with the Coastal Act. Thank you, sir. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you very much. And that concludes general public comment. We're going to go ahead and move into our special meeting. Mr. City Attorney? I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Blumenfield, Bonnens, Buscainus, Adio, Englander, Harris-Dawson, Weezer, Coretts, Krikorhan, Martinez, Oferel, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present in a quorum. Madam President.
Okay, now we have item 13 and 14 before us.
Yes, and on item 13, excuse me, Madam President, amending motions 13A and 13B have been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration.
There's been a request to continue item 13.
Until what day, Madam President?
Until Tuesday of next week, which is March 6. And there's also been a request to continue item 14 as well.
Yes, on number 14, we've received a letter from the Property Owners Council. I recommend that we do continue that until Tuesday.
Very well. Without objection, that will be the order. Let's go ahead and adjourn our special meeting. We're going to go back to our regular council meeting. Members, are there any special announcements?
Madam President, we do have motions for posting a referral.
Posted and referred, members, are there any special announcements? Saying none, can we please rise for adjourned motions? And I'm going to ask the members of the public, out of respect, to please rise during our adjourned motions. Are there any adjourned motions to my left? Saying none, any adjourned motions to my, I'm sorry, to my right, now to my left? Any other adjourned motions? Saying none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Have a good weekend.